Public District Order. We have two resolutions coming out of Executive Session. And we'll read them in their entirety. Resolution 2017 v. 69. Whereas the Board of Education of the Kingston City School District, the Board, has under consideration the conveyance of its one-half, 50 percent ownership of Deed Stadium to the City of Kingston, which owns the other one-half interest in Deed Stadium. The proposed action and whereas the Board proposes to proceed with the proposed action and wishes to take all actions necessary in connection therewith in order to comply to the State Environmental Quality Review Act or SECPA, including designating itself as lead agency for the purpose of determination of the environmental impact of the proposed action and whereas the Board believes that the proposed action is an unlisted action under Section 617.5 of SECPA regulations and whereas the district has prepared a short environmental assessment form, EAF, Part II, EAF, and Part III, EAF, and publicly reviewed and discussed the issues pertaining the year to at a board meeting conducted on March 27, 2018, therefore be it further resolved the Board of Education hereby designates itself as lead agency for the proposed action and that a coordinated review is not needed and be it further resolved if careful consideration, analysis, and review, including a review of EAF, the Board hereby determines that such proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment and makes a negative declaration for the purpose of SECPA and no further action is necessary and be it further resolved that the Board hereby authorizes Dr. Paul J. Catalino, Superintendent Schools, to execute the EAF on behalf of the Board and be it further resolved that the Board clerk is authorized and directed to this resolution and any other appropriate notices of this determination in accordance with Part 617.12b of the SECPA regulations. The contact person for the Kingston City School District is Dr. Paul J. Catalino, Superintendent of Schools. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Another question.
Yes.
In terms of how this takes effect, the next resolution we're going to consider is putting the proposal on the agenda at the May 16 election, or May 15 election, for public approval.
So would you prefer that I read both resolutions and then we have a discussion?
Yeah, because every people needs to know that I agree with you. D-69 is not an effective one because the voters vote on approving it.
I shall do. Resolution 2017 v. 70. Whereas in 1989, the City of Kingston conveyed to the Board of Education, Kingston City School District, one-half ownership of the Deed Stadium property, referred to as Deed Stadium, and whereas the City of Kingston has the ability to apply for certain grants for the improvement of Deed Stadium if the City has sole ownership of Deed Stadium, and whereas the Board of Education believes that it is in the best interest of the community and the Kingston City School District to convey its one-half ownership of Deed Stadium to the City of Kingston, provided that the Kingston City School District continues to have priority use of Deed Stadium on the same basis as it currently has as one-half owner for the benefit of its students and school community. Therefore be it resolved the following proposition be placed on the ballot at the annual meeting of the voters, Kingston City School District, to be conducted on May 15, 2018. And the proposition reads, "Conveyance of Deed Stadium to the City of Kingston. Shall the Board of Education of Kingston City School District," or School District, Ulster County, New York, be authorized to convey to the City of Kingston by quick claim deed the school district's one-half ownership of the Deed Stadium property. A parcel of real property with improvements consisting of 12.08 acres, more or less, located at 170 North Front Street and 51 through 65 Joyce Lane in the City of Kingston. Tax map parcel number 48.79-1-2.100. At no monetary consideration upon such terms, conditions, as determined by the Board of Education and as more particularly described in the attachment which is made a part of hereof. And be it further resolved that for the proposition shall read as follows for the ballots for the voting machines at the May 15, 2018 annual meeting. Shall the Board of Education of Kingston City School District be authorized to convey to the City of Kingston by quick claim deed the school district's one-half ownership of the Deed Stadium property consisting of 12.08 acres, more or less, located at 170 North Front Street and 51 through 65 Joyce Lane in the City of Kingston. Tax map parcel number 48.79-1-2.100. At no consideration and upon such terms and conditions as determined by the Board of Education. And be it further resolved that the district clerk is authorized and directed to cause this proposition to be published in the designated newspapers. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Thank you, and we'll open up discussion to both together, D-59 and D-70.
If I could just give a quick explanation of all of those things that you just read. So really what these resolutions are asking for, are doing, is putting on the ballot the, put it on the ballot for the voters to come out, and we're asking permission of the voters to possibly sell our, or convey our half to Kingston, to the City of Kingston. This isn't a resolution that is actually confirming a sale, there would still have to be our conveyance, there would still have to be an agreement between the City and the School District at some point. So as we did with many of the buildings, when we have vacant buildings, we have to first ask our community to vote to allow us to actually put something up for sale. In this case, to allow us to actually enter into a conversation with the City about what the terms would be to convey that to them. And the reason we're doing this is the City currently has received a large grant from the State of New York to do renovations in the Uptown case, and a part of that money they would like to use, a pretty, a large part of that money they would like to use for the renovations at Deed Stadium. Anyone who used Deed Stadium knows that that is something that needs to happen. So we feel that this is in the best interest of our students, best interest of our community, and best interest of the City, that we would be able to continue to partner with the City, but allow them to have full ownership of Deed Stadium and receive the grant money for the renovations needed. So there's no, it isn't asking people to give us a permission, it's asking to give us a permission to sell, but there is no sale at this point, there would still need to be an agreement.
So I think it's important to make there a few things that we, it's our understanding that the City, that this grant funding for this fortune for Deeds is actually contingent on the City having sole ownership.
Correct.
So they might not get that funding to fix Deeds if they don't have sole ownership.
Correct.
And then the other thing that's important is that we use those fields a lot, and that we would not enter, we would not necessarily work at our half unless we were completely satisfied and it was an arrangement with the City that was long-term and enduring about how the Kingston City School District will continue to use those fields, and that we would have primary access to them.
And that's why this resolution asks for the community to give us permission to enter into those conversations with the City, but it would be the Board, it would be up to the Board to negotiate and to agree, and the terms such as that would be, obviously, we're not going to agree to do this without those terms. And I know that the City and Mayor Noble is aware of that and in agreement.
Right, so our football team, band, cross, everybody will still have access and primary access in an agreement that we would agree to.
Right, we will not agree to anything less.
And to piggyback on what Dr. Poma said, we, if we were to seek funding or grant money, we would probably be correct, have similar obstacles because we only own 50 percent ownership. So no matter what, this 50/50 deal is going to probably pose some barriers towards.
Correct. If we wanted to do renovations to Deed Stadium, we would have to then obtain the other half ownership, and the other thing is, we would, we don't have access to the funds that the City has right now. We would have to do a referendum, we would have to ask the voters to approve this referendum, and we would have to borrow money, and then the voters and the taxpayers would have to pay for this, for the renovations. So this is, and unlike many of our school buildings that receive state aid, you know, we talk about our 62 percent state aid that we get, unlike our school buildings, Deed Stadium does not qualify for state aid, so it would be a dollar-for-dollar investment, not a 40 cents-on-the-dollar investment that we have in many of our, you know, in all of our school building projects. So this is, in my opinion, we've been talking about renovations at Deed Stadium, we know that there are a lot of issues there. In my opinion, this is, this is the best hope that we've had in the six years I've been talking about Deed Stadium, to get some of the much-needed work done at Kingston, or at Deed Stadium done.
I would just like to point out that this, I don't know if anybody's going to see this map, but the area that's highlighted or not shaded is much more than the 12.08, 12.08 acres of Deed Stadium, you know, because that doesn't include Bailey, Forsyth Park, Edson, which one might, you know, one might have the impression that, that all of that is included, it's just a small portion of that area.
Any other questions? If there's no objection, I'd like to move both resolutions together, for D-69 and D-70. So all those in favor, please say with your hands, saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, resolution carries. Okay, next up, we have District, School District Happenings, I think the title is Unseen Heroes. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sigman, please.
Hello, everybody. Tonight's video will be talking about the Food Service Department, wonderful department I've gotten to know over the past few weeks. As Board members, you may know that more than 60 percent of Kingston students are considered economically disadvantaged, with the number of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch as high as 90 percent in some of our elementary schools. Thanks to the community eligibility provisions, students eat for free at GW Chambers, JFK, and Edson Elementary Schools. For some students, this breakfast and lunch provided at school is the main or only source of nutrition to fuel their day. Our Food Service Department is responsible for a very important task, ensuring that thousands of students have a freshly-prepared hot meal. The Food Service Department is a great example of a group of employees who quietly do their jobs, day in and day out, and provide a very essential service to our kids, and we wanted to take this opportunity to thank them.
Do you want everyone to see with this, this microphone?
My name is Ed Corelli, I'm the Director of Food Services here at Kingston Schools. Our Food Service Department has made 10 school buildings serving 6,400 students, both breakfast and lunch, and snacks in a few heartlands. Our central kitchen here at J. Watson Bailey prepares the food, receives the food, counts the food out, and ships the food to the schools each day. Our food service drivers deliver tomorrow's breakfast and today's lunch, which happens in all of the buildings except the high school. We have put in a brand-new kitchen at the high school. At the high school, we supply them with the bulk food, and they actually do their own scratch building in that. Many eligibility schools are all free breakfast and lunch. Students only get in line, we are identifying anyone by name, if they want to eat, they can eat with our products.
JFK has a breakfast program with approximately 170 of our kids, but we have a school population of 358, and we have been working hard to get our kids here early, because of course if they're here for breakfast, they're going to be here for school. We start at 8:10 in the morning, and that's followed by an activity club that our coach runs in the gym. So it's twofold, we get the kids in to have some food, for many of our kids, it's an opportunity for them to eat so that their brain is ready for learning, and then we get them moving with the physical activity. We have a great staff here, they know the kids by name, they greet them, they really make them feel welcome and appreciated, and that's so much a part of how they need to build school community.
Our food service consists of 70 employees in various positions, so school managers, food service helpers, senior food service helpers, food service drivers.
Work as a team, there are some times where there's three or four phone calls going on at times, someone's short of food, we need to make sure that food gets to them, I'm always close to the phone to get those calls, because we don't, you know, we want to support our girls out of the schools.
Also, most of our staff have been doing jobs for many years.
I agree. And I worship the Lord's peace. I'm just going to get a job for a couple of months. There you go, say it. I had a job last night, I had a look, she's our manager, and she's my sister Suzanne. We're the first one down, we want everybody to open up. This is a lot of ball, we have a great crew. The ones who play are really nice. They're nice. They're happy. They're very nice.
We're all here to support the education of our children, so they can get the education that they need, and one of our purposes in school meals, with all the nutrition, health wellness going on, is to educate these children, even in their eating, which they're going to do the rest of their lives.
I just love the kids, the kids eating, you know, see their smiles, they're looking on their phone, they keep their little ways, and you watch them grow up.
All these fellow employees because they are such, they've been here many, many years working, they know the routines of what we're doing, and a lot of them are here because they love the children. That's what we need while we're all here.
We talked about the food service program yesterday at our Audit and Finance Committee meeting, and Dr. Catalino pointed out that Kingston City School District, not only do we feed a lot of students, we're one of the only school districts in the State that runs, that shows a surplus at the end of the year. This year it might be $60,000. It's not a lot, but a lot of districts are spending anywhere between $150,000 and $400,000 just in Ulster County subsidizing their food program.
Thank you, Mr. Shallow. Any other comments? Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Sigman. And that brings us to a first opportunity for public participation. I would like to let you know it's two minutes, our Board clerk will let you know when you're approaching the two minutes. If you are not able to finish your statement, you can leave anything that you have in print with our Board clerk, or forward it to her, and she'll make sure that's disseminated to us. There are rules for speech at the public meeting on non-podium, please familiarize yourself with them. We do not interview any discussion of any student listener reaction that comes under fur cry, and there are other venues for that. And so with that, I have first signed up Ms. Lily Thompson.
Is this working?
Yes. Pull it down, Lily, pull it down.
Oh, no. Can people hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Lily Thompson. I am in eighth grade and I go to Bailey. On March 14, 2018, our National School Walkout Day, at 10 o'clock, I was in history when a student walked out. Six minutes later, in between periods, when I walked out to go to lunch, near the stairs, there were people crowding near the stairs. I also saw teachers blocking the doors. I knew they were blocking the doors so they wouldn't let kids out walk out. At recess, a whole bunch of people were in a circle, shouting, "We want justice," and the principal, vice principal, and principal were there. Then after recess, people sat down for the moment of silence for those who were in the shooting. After, after recess, when I went to the studio art, people in my class saw people still outside. I heard after, five people got OSS for three days. It is unfair that the high schoolers get to do it, but we can't do the walkout. We want to be able to do the same things that high schools get to do, like the walkout, because we know what's going on. We know what happened on the days of the shooting. We've been doing lockdown drills since we were younger and watched the news when we get home. We know what's going on, and that just shouldn't stop us from it. We also want to be able to not get consequences for things we do, because deep down we know we care about this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Lily. Next up, Brad Will. Brad Will?
Hi, my name is Brad Will, and I just want to applaud Lily for her courage in getting up and speaking on behalf of her fellow students. I'm here for the same reason. Now, I don't know firsthand what happened at Bailey School, we have a daughter at Bailey and a son at Edson, but what I did here, which in legal least I suppose would be called hearsay, I found to be very disturbing. If teachers were indeed blocking the doors, I consider that to be, and I think I'm not alone in this, I think the ACLU has spoken about this, to be a violation of those students' First Amendment rights. And on top of that, it really was a denial of what could have been a tremendous civics learning opportunity, educational opportunity. So I don't know why the students, or why the teachers, or anybody, the administrators, would take it upon themselves, whether they were instructed to do so or did, or not, to block the doors. Now, as we know, the horrendous happenings at Parkland and all these school massacres need to stop, and the students at this very moment, after Parkland, are actually coalescing and showing us adults frankly, how we should be operating. And I think, I'm just in tremendous awe of how they're carrying themselves and making a statement and taking on the NRA. And I thought Kingston school systems is a place where that could be supported and not, not denied, or thwarted in any way. Now, also, keep in mind that what happened at Parkland and all these schools, were shootings inside of the schools. So it was a safety issue, it seems a little ironic that students were being kept in the schools instead of being allowed to go outside, protest peacefully, and commemorate the 17 lives that were lost in Parkland. So I just want to end it saying, I think something should be looked at there, and thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board at this time? Anybody else? All right, very now takers. Move on to the approval of minutes, and cover our twenty-first. I'm sorry, apologize, I'm working on an old agenda. Okay, then I will turn the floor over to Dr. Catalino for his superintendent's report.
Okay, speaking of the superintendent's report tonight, and I'm going to start off with, I'm going to actually allow Ms. Bondell to come up and introduce two of our teachers from Kingston High School, and we're going to talk about a new elective in our, excuse me, excuse me, could you move that microphone a place so we can see that the screen isn't blocked? Oh, sorry, I didn't realize it was still used.
Good evening, we have two of our fine English teachers with us tonight, Cassandra Taylor and Christina Bartley, and they're going to speak about our proposed new African-American elective. We'll turn the floor over to you.
Good evening, I'm Cassandra Taylor, and this is my colleague Christina Bartley. We're both English teachers at KHS, and we wanted to thank the Board for giving us this opportunity to speak to you about a new elective that we propose. Two years, pretty much in the making of this, Bartley and I discussing a need that we saw that students voiced to us, that they saw, for more diverse literature and the opportunity to have writers and instruction culturally based, you know, more so at Kingston High School. And we're hoping that this elective will open the door for other students of color to feel that they can, you know, push forward and have electives that represent their voices. And so we have a course description that we're going to pass around, and that talks about, this course is going to be for the 12th grade. It's an elective that we hope will bring in many different types of students. Both Ms. Bartley and I are certified in special ed, I have a background in sociology, I've taught this course in different formats before, and so bringing literature and history together for our kids was primarily, you know, our, our push, that this is history and point of view that our kids haven't gotten at Kingston, and we felt that it was time, and the kids also voiced that, that agreement, that it was time to have their voices heard in the course. So we also have some textbooks to show you that we're going to be using for the kids. For Ms. Bartley and I, the Norton Anthology of African-American literature is going to be kind of a base for us. This isn't for the kids, this huge book, this is for us. But we also have all different types of literature represented in this course. It's an A/B course, so it will be two semesters, and so there's science fiction and fantasy represented, along with classics, along with short stories and plays, and we feel that the course gives a very good kind of overview, survey, of the history of African-American literature in the United States that the kids have been asking for for quite a long time.
Did you say it was an AP course?
It's an A and B course, they call it in high school. So it's two semesters, and so kids can join at any point for first semester, and then we can have a whole different set of kids come in for second semester.
My applause you for creating something that was coming out of desire of your students and bringing the choices, so I think it's great.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw, I'm sorry, I just got lost.
Just like to echo what was said, I think it's great to have this type of course for our students.
Thank you.
Yes, I would agree. And I hope also that this is the first of many that we see in courses from multiple different kinds of perspectives. Is this ready to go? Are we going to be offering this first year this next year?
Yes, starting in September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You may all.
My thinking's very positive.
We are too. The kids are too. Thank you.
I'm really glad you're using textbooks. It's a great book.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing we have on our superintendent's report is our principal's report, and tonight we have Ms. Lomelabianco from Meyer.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I was told that I had to keep it short because last year I spoke for 40 minutes. I won't let you get to that today. So first of all, good evening, Dr. Catalino, Board of Education members, Teaching and Learning Cabinet members, and community members. Again, my name is Lomelabianco, and I am so proud to be the principal of Carnegie Meyer Elementary School. I want to say thank you for allowing me to have this amazing experience. I wake up every day doing what I love, and that's just the best thing, you know, that you can ever ask for. I would like to personally thank Dr. Shallow for her continued support, your, I mean, I appreciate your guidance and your leadership, so I really thank her for that. I want to thank my Meyer staff who's here and at home. I couldn't have asked for an amazing group of hard-working and dedicated individuals. Tonight I want to focus on one thing. Last year I had mentioned that I, that Meyer fourth graders would be participating in the Teaching and Empathy Institute with David Levine. After much conversation over the summer with David and Mr. Verge, we were granted the opportunity to actually pilot this program to the entire Meyer community. As you know, schools today are facing many challenges when it comes to the social and emotional, mental health of our children. As part of the Kingston City School District, DTSDE, and the Meyer Step Plan, social, emotional, mental health is an issue that we are working to always support. This year at Meyer, we created the School of Belonging, and I'm proud. A school that cultivates an emotionally safe, physically safe learning environment where students are nurtured. This year at Meyer, we created the School of Belonging. I'm proud. A school that cultivates an emotionally safe, physically safe learning environment where students are nurtured, they're supported, they're encouraged toward their unique expressions and their academic achievements. At Meyer, the School of Belonging, communication, caring, and trust are the norm there. Everyone has a voice and the confidence that others will listen. Students feel enthusiasm about the discoveries that they make each and every day that school brings. They are honored for their individual gifts and they honor others in return. The Meyer School of Belonging is providing a holistic approach to quality education that takes into the account, social and emotional, and leadership skills that are necessary for 21st century learning. With the understanding that sustainability takes a whole community and that's what we are, a rare community. The School of Belonging works with all the stakeholders. It starts with me. It starts with the support personnel, teachers, students, parents, and the community around us. The goal of the Meyer School of Belonging is to ensure that every student and adult who walks through the door of Meyer Elementary School feels welcomed and valued. Our school is built on the principle that relationships are the key to school success. And I had mentioned this last year, that if we do not build relationships with our kids and our families and our communities, then we're not doing our job. The relationship is built on the capacity to listen to one another, to have empathy, and to demonstrate kindness every single day. Over the course of this school year, we have and continue to support students in a building to build a toolkit for social and emotional skills with high-level listening as the cornerstone of the School of Belonging. Using songs, stories, podcasts, dialogue, community rituals, cooperative learning strategies, we are providing our students with weekly practice in self-awareness and self-regulation, active listening, social decision-making, and group problem-solving and planning. We are also building on the amazing strength of the teachers and the teaching assistants by both regular professional support in developing the social and emotional skills in the classroom and beyond. The fundamental belief of the School of Belonging is that all the members of this community deserve to feel connected. And this is what we do when we feel connected, through the cultivation of helpful and positive relationships. The starting point for this connection is listening. For it is only when we listen to our students that relevant and meaningful learning will take place. So, I want you to have a little glimpse of our beautiful Meyer School of Belonging.
Better and better out of the way. So, I want you guys to practice listening. Somebody's made an mistake, I'm going to ask you how it went. Okay? Just because you're saying something, it doesn't mean that you're the person who wants it. And we'll go through that. Okay, I was having this conversation with Olivia. A lot of times that's the next step, to go tell the teacher, say, if you do it again, I'll tell. Right? But is there any creative solution that you could come up with that isn't telling the teacher, but that kind of recommends, okay, this person really wants the pencil. What could I do to kind of ease that pathway? You can use colors, you can use drawing, you can use... Whatever is the easiest way to make your idea. You can use R and a C. Can you talk to me again? Can you just sort of summarize, name the main points? What are the ways that we show each other that we are really listening? Yes. Whatever. We keep our bodies still. We can align our bodies up there.
I love teaching empathy at Meyer because she teaches us how to be kind and generous. And if somebody's sad, like we help each other. If, like, one another's feelings got hurt, it's hard to help them and be nice enough. We all help each other and we're like in a family here at Meyer. I love teaching empathy because it teaches you how to be a better person in school, not just in school. It teaches you how to be a better person in the world in general. And I love Meyer because it's a great principal, teachers. And if you're not at Meyer, you should come because it's a really good school. So, everybody back at the little elementary school, they should definitely come here. You should sign your kids up because it's a good school. Meyer rocks!
I just want to say that that was produced and edited by a Kingston High School student. My son Chad will be on. So, any questions?
Dr. Shonzie. So, can you talk a little bit more about how you've integrated the School of Belonging kind of into the school culture and how it permeates throughout?
So, we have Rebecca and Rachel who come in and also David Levine is actually working with the kindergarten rooms at this time. And we have, they have a set time when they meet in the morning before school starts to kind of go over the lessons or any things that the teachers want to talk about. So, that's kind of like their professional development at that moment. And then the teachers go into the classroom and it's actually just the language that we're using. The kids are using it with each other. One of the biggest things is the being connected and not being part of a circle, which is a circle that, you know, we are a family and we always have to include others. So, if others are hurting, why are they hurting? We have to make sure that we're taking care of each other. So, it's in the halls, in the cafeteria, so everyone's doing it. So, everybody's speaking the same language. And there are actual lessons that go with it, so.
Well, this is very, this is wonderful to me. I'm glad you're doing it. I'll take an opportunity, I've been telling people for the last couple of years, even sitting in front of Commissioner Mary Ellen Malia, that I think that common care is more important than common core. And I think this is a great example.
Well, we've been able this year to really connect both. So, when the kids are in school and they're feeling connected, you're going to have a higher rate of success for kids academically, socially, emotionally. They come into the building, they know that they're safe. And that's one of the biggest things that, you know, the nation is going through right now, having a feeling of safety. But emotional safety too. And we are making sure that we are acknowledging and affirming every child that walked into that building and that we're taking care of them in all aspects.
Well, that's great, honey. And I know this is taking place in schools throughout the district. So, I think that's really a part of the thing that's going on when it comes to the city school district, the emphasis on social, emotional, mental health.
We need it. Thank you for your time. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
And you're more than welcome to visit.
As Ms. Lomelobianco said, I'll work with the Teaching and Empathy Institute. It's a district-wide effort. Meyer is supposed to be doing some intensive work, but there's also a lot of time that teachers have in the morning. Like Ms. Lomelobianco said, we've also been working with Teaching and Empathy Institute. They offer, they are offering professional development after hours at their offices here. And actually, we've had to increase those offerings because our teachers have ultimate role of... So, they fill every seat every time we have the Teaching and Empathy Institute professional development. So, it's really a great thing, important that they, that we're doing it. And it's exciting that our teachers are so involved that they're going out there and getting this professional development, Teaching and Empathy Institute. So, it's exciting, very exciting. Okay, last thing on the superintendent's report is an abbreviated version of our Second Century Project. We just have Ms. Sprevamos here today because KSQ wasn't able to make it after the change. Oh, Mr. Clapper, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Oh, Mr. Clapper. And Mr. Clapper, so we will have a semi-abbreviated Second Century Report.
It's pretty abbreviated. As far as the Phase 2 and the pre-con, at this point, there were SED and just waiting to hear back from them before we can move forward on that. And at this point, we don't anticipate doing any work for the Phase 2 during the 2018-19 school year. 2019?
Eighteen nineteen.
Got it. Okay, so, we'll do an update on where we're at with construction itself. Again, if you've been by the high school, it's all taking shape. You can see exactly what this point is when it's all said and done. We've got the south lobby addition ongoing. All the metal is in place. Stairs are all up and in place. We have the framing and the sheet rock is done. There's probably about 20 feet left of complete framing in the entire building to be done. Next week is a big week for us for spring break. We're going to be doing the floor tile outside the cafeteria and reopening that corridor. We're going to be installing the final casework in the school store outside the countertops, which just have to be fabricated. We're putting some, we've had a couple of requests for additional outlets out in the survey line and some of those types of things will be done next week as well. And some work in typically otherwise occupied areas that'll be taken care of next week because it is our hope to finish all of the work in areas that are typically occupied because we won't have any more breaks until summer and we would really like to be done by then. So, that's our, that's our goal for next week. To give you an idea of where we're at, again, this is the south lobby where you can see the metal framing on the east side of the building that gets covered with metal panels. The entire face of it does as well. There's some accent colors as well as the plain metal panels. And then where you can see the framing here, that's where the entire glass enclosure and the doorway and the entrance will be from the south plaza. This kind of gives you another idea. We're putting in the J windows. These are the three banks of windows that are going in to create the three new classrooms on the first floor of Salzman where the cafeteria used to be. And again, you can continue to see the site work that's going on. We've got to finish up the parking lot, which we expect to start to have pavement coming in May 1st, or the week of May 1st. And then we'll do the waterline. We've got some site lighting to finish up in that area. And then the final roadway that'll be the connection between Andrew Street and West River Island. Interior-wise, again, it's much further along than even these pictures are every day. It's almost all sheet rock at this point. These are some of the bump outs that will be the class-designated areas. So, there'll be a TV monitor and some artwork and that. There's one for each of the academies in the commons area. Glazing is all done in the library. You can see where these walls and columns already have all of the wall tile in. In the library, we're just going to finish the ceiling, put the finished flooring in, and then the casework and specialty bookcases and the furniture and everything will finish out that space. Ninety percent of all mechanical work is already done at this point. Offices already have carpet. Casework is in the classrooms on the second floor. Floor finishes are done. Ceilings, we just have to fill in the field. Again, same thing, finishes. Next week, we'll get the casework for the science rooms in Salzman and those will start to go in. Got the stairs. We did some floor leveling because the floors, existing floors were not in, not in great shape. Finishing up, we're just doing interior painting, the floors and the areas that have been, that the work has been completed in the mechanical room. We've got the roofing going on because we anticipate, now that the roof is done on the south end of Salzman, we can install the elevator. So, that's what we've been waiting for at that point. You know, some brickwork that had to be done prior to the elevator installation. And I threw these on here because it brings back memories. This on the left side here is one of the salvaged windows from the MJM Kubla. We have four of them. This is probably in, probably as good, if not one of the better in shape windows that we have. And we're working with KSQ right now and they're coming up with a design so that these can be displayed throughout the, throughout the school. And we're working within the steering committee to decide how that will happen and how these will be restored and where they will be placed. And then, of course, we have the existing garden area and this whole area here will also be cleaned up. We need some direction from the garden club, but you can see where that'll be cleaned up and finished. That's right outside of Mr. Reinhardt's office, as a matter of fact. Everything's going ready. We're going to be finishing up. We'll do a tour in a couple of months and show everybody where we're at and very exciting.
Yes. Since you showed the new entrance, which will be open next school year, that they'll enter through Salzman, not the front, correct? Can you speak a little bit about what that entrance looks like? Because I just, I learned recently that it's a little safer than the current entrance and I think it's important for, it's a double...
So, by code, you have to have so many doors for so many kids. And we accomplished that. In the center, there's a set of doors, but also to the side, there's a security door. And that's where all the students are really going to be coming and going. In emergencies, they'll go out the big doors. So, what they call a man trap, there's a set of doors and then an inside set of doors. So, that area is secure and it comes into a secure lobby and then down the hallway. One of the other features of that is the main entrance doesn't line up with the hallway. It's offset. So, when you come in, you kind of run into a little bit of a wall when you come around the corner to the main hallway. And again, the kid's safety is paramount. And we, the design of this was thought about with a lot, with Mr. Velez. He was, he was very diligent and persuasive of what he wanted for this. And he felt this was the safest way to bring kids in. The other thing is the security office is right behind the lobby. So, all the timer monitors, all the security officers, that's their center. And so, they're going to be right at the entrance also.
So, we'll have the kids that come off the bus loop in the new bus direction depending on what's decided. And then this whole area here that you can see and up here is all the glass. And there's doorway. From this glass on out forward, there's a 60-foot plaza. So, it goes out 60 foot to the main road and it's the same width as the entire south lobby. So, you're going to have a nice grand entrance as you come in.
You notice every time you touch it, you leave a mark. It's only been four years, Ron.
Have to get some reaching on this.
Few more months to go. We can get through this. We can get through... And again, this will be a single point of entry. So, as long as this is a single point of entry and all the other doors are exit only. You can see the door, even on the side of the west addition here, that's only an exit door. That's not something that people can come in and go. So, as a single point of entry on the south here. And then again, once they're locked down and the kids are in, they have to go through the security and the man trap and all of that, which is right by where the elevators and that type of thing.
Thank you. We've just recently, Suzanne and I, we've been talking about trying to improve those entrances in all of the buildings if we could get money to do that. And Dr. Panalino was sometimes let us know how it's changing with the new structure, so.
Yeah, and I'll try to make a point next month so that I can put up the presentation or the actual elevation so that you can get a better sense of the look of the front and then decisions on maybe some modifications if you're looking at them for other things.
And then just the, I was in the library the other day and it's, I think, I think that high school librarians and the high school teachers are very happy in the library. It's a really collegiate type of library where there's breakout rooms and there's teaching classrooms. There are teaching rooms, often with full-size classrooms. And there's a lot of, a lot of things that I think we didn't have in our other library. It's a much more modern, much more collegiate feel and a lot more opportunities to use the library as a resource while you're doing your teaching or, you know, small group instruction. So, the way it was designed and laid out is really, I think it's a great learning space.
Including the new furniture so that you can sit on a nice upholstered chair with your laptop and everything. And it's all set up with like a private little desk so that you can be comfortable and do your work and research and that type of thing. It's going to be spectacular.
It's a 21st century, huh?
School in general, in general.
So, when is Toven and Whistler going to come down?
In Phase 2.
In Phase, Phase 2 is not going to start until September or summer of 2019. It will begin during the school year 1819. 1819, I think that's what you said at the beginning.
Well, she actually said we're not going to be doing any work next year. And truthfully, what we're waiting for is SED. SED has, we've met with them several times for early funding for our BAUs to reset and our funding to reset. And we have not gotten a decision from them. They've asked for a tremendous amount of information, which is all been provided to them. They're digesting it now and we're, we're hoping for an answer relatively soon. We'll be able to answer that question a little bit better.
But we do have a plan. So I don't want you to say, we're not going to be doing, our plan is to bid that Phase Two portion of it so that we can partway through the year by Easter, by spring recess, empty out Tobin Wiston, which is pretty much going to be empty anyway. Then we have three or four months of specialist maintenance and cleanup of the building, just like we did with MJM. So it's our plan then that the demolition wouldn't take place until like the first of July and get the majority of it down and away from the West Edition by September. There'll still be cleanup. Obviously, we all watched how long it took them to get MJM out of the way. But we're, but we're scheduling it for the minimal amount of impact and I don't want to take down Tobin Wiston with, you know, eight feet away from the West Edition during the school year. So that's what we're phasing it and planning it in that, in that direction.
Maybe you have to get approval from SED before you go out and bid it.
And if the bucket refills, we can start that earlier?
As soon as the bucket, in fact, even though it looks like we're taking a break, there's a bunch of stuff going on behind the scenes. We're refining the prints, we're deciding how we're going to do the logistics around site. Again, Tobin Wiston is not that far away and we want to make sure that that's all safe. And on the other side, on O'Reilly Street, we're in the people's backyard. We are, we are six feet off the property line. So we're, we're making plans of how to make that all safe. We've had people on-site demolition experts on the site to, to help us coordinate that. So we're constantly working on it. We're just, we're, we're in the waiting game with SED.
We can make adjustments to the final demolition and all of those schedules once we have a start date. But we had always anticipated, again, that we would have a start date sometime during a summer. So it won't be this summer. That's all I can, that's all I know at this point.
But the other Phase Two work would, would be available sooner if we could get a bucket filled.
Absolutely.
And we're just waiting on that.
Correct.
And when is the bucket? No, the bucket.
It's a big bucket.
It's a big bucket. It is a big bucket. If we don't hear from SED, like I'm kind of forgetting when it's supposed to fill if we don't get a waiver for this. We don't, if they don't do any sooner.
For the regeneration, the original regeneration is based on the contract amounts that they would have regenerated starting from between 2015 and 2016.
So the fund will regenerate a little bit at a time, you know? So, so there's, as we talk about the buckets, because that's how we talk about how the funding comes in buckets for certain different, the way the state does it. So the funding's going to come back a little bit at a time. So the, the scheduling has been such, we'll be able to, that we'll start doing work as that, as that funding kind of comes back in from 20, the 2015 work, that money will regenerate in 2020. So in the 16 to 2021, we're trying to get it all back at one time. Yeah. And, and again, that's, we're asking for special, you know, for special consideration and we're providing a lot of information. There's a lot of benefit to, to, to our community and actually to everyone in the state because they're partially paid for by the state, to that regeneration. It will save, it saves, it saves interest when we bond, it saves the, the cost of escalation because the price of steel today might not be the price of steel in two years from now. So those are the kind of things that we are asking for the state to consider and they're, they're considering. They may ask for information and we've been providing a lot of information to them to try to help them with that decision.
And KSQ is also spearheading and in constant contact with SED as far as making sure that they had everything they need and what the review time and the best way to go about having the review done, whether in SED or what other options that they may have.
Mr. Kleber, are there going to be a need for any improvements in Old Main if we don't get the funding pushed ahead? Like, are there things that have to be repaired that were going to be part of the project?
Well, luckily, we replaced the heating system early. It was part of Phase Two and we've done that already. So that's, that's 90% complete. There's a few areas that haven't been and we left the old steam boiler. I, I, I do have concerns with the old steam boiler, but that's even really well this year and she seems like she's going to make it a few more and God bless. And the, the other, the other concern is the bathrooms and, and we're there all the time. We're, there, there's a couple of dynamics. We're, we're taxing the building, the newer buildings with all the students down. There's less students in Main, which gives us an opportunity to do maintenance in there. But then what's happening is we're finding out all, it's actually good for us because then we're finding out the little nuances to the new buildings while the contractors are still here and we're correcting problems as we're going along. So we've had a few cold spots, hot spots, few light issues, few little minor issues, but by and large, we're, everything is running pretty smoothly. And, and in a typical year, we would do probably 200 work orders at the high school anyway. And so this year, we probably did about 300, so.
But it won't mean a greater expense for us. It just won't be the same, is what I'm saying.
Right. Right. No, we're not going to do a wholesale change out of the bathroom or anything like that. We're, we're just putting it together to hold it together until we can do this work.
I've sent here to the board, I don't think you were here when I asked it, but I'd like you to consider bullet resistant glass on the lower level of that South entrance, given the state.
Yeah, Mr. Shaughnessy, we're going to discuss that the next board meeting.
Right. Well, well, just to respond to that, again, the safety is paramount and we are exploring all areas. We, KSQ is in charge with looking at different options for that. And again, we'll, we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Well, no, I've heard that, like the, the bulletproof glass that they have in the White House is something like $300 per square foot, which is not reasonable.
Mr. Olson is going to get a whole cost estimate out and we will be discussing.
This new structure would never hold solid bulletproof glass, but there's other options that could go if you.
Well, I think it's paramount, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, a lengthy superintendent's report, but that concludes.
Thank you.
I will have a lengthy one again, eighteen, maybe. All right. Consent agenda brings us to the portion of the agenda. Are there any resolutions of interest you would like fully consent agenda?
I just have a question. D39 donation from Community Playthings, is the attached furniture list, is that in the library?
It's actually, you can see they're in the library and there's.
Yes, right. Right. I think that's all in the library.
Any other, it's not there now. Any other, any resolutions in, like, please? I don't understand. Second, consent agenda. Second, okay, any further questions?
I have a question on BOE 67, creative cleaner position, which restricts.
OK, extra classroom activity information, who posted a four new blocks that were brought to.
BOE 67.
BOE. Oh, BOE. I'm looking, sorry.
Jeff, Jeff.
I had 67.
Thank you. You got it.
I'd also like to make a comment. I think it's valuable that we have an Alzheimer's program. This shows a need and also it's wonderful.
Was that, was your question answered?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Now, interesting motion, like consent agenda. We did that, okay. That's amazing what we're chatting about. Okay. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say ayes.
Ayes.
Opposed? Abstention. And Miss Guido, would you do the donations for that?
Sure will.
Thank you.
We have D39, whereas the Community Playthings wish to donate furniture items to the University School of Mahar Pre-School Center. It's exciting, thank you.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
So I, first of all, I want to thank the, thank Community Playthings and the, and our friends at the group offer that donation. And what that is, is that is a full classroom of, of furniture for the pre-pace center. Tom and his men have renovated one classroom and we are putting that furniture in there kind of as a model. We're inviting parents to come in later in April, I think the 18th. April 18th will be having our parents of preschoolers or pop, you know, group come in so they can see kind of what, what, it's not really what the building's going to look like, but at least they can see what a classroom is going to look like. So we're going to invite them in to see that. So we're really, really pleased that they were willing to donate that so we kind of get that jumpstart and get parents to see what we're doing in the classrooms at, at Mahar.
Great, very exciting. And D41, whereas Chambers Elementary Schools, recipient of a generous donation from the Connect Kids Transportation Grants Program, parks recreation, historic preservation in the amount of $680.
Do you think they have a donation?
Yes, thank you.
Very appreciative of how it was donated. And this brings us to the Board of Education Committee. And this week, we have three, two report out. First one is Teaching Learning and Elementary Publics. We have.
There's two other community events on March 1st. We've got a lot of time talking about the data from the quarter one, two, this big national report, which actually I'm hoping you can get in the library. And also hoping this will go on the, on the internet at the minute. So we had asked the board, you know, we have annual reports with the state test, we'd asked the board to hear more about local testing and what the outcomes are for kids on the local test. So we did, so that was STAR, that was our, those are our guided reading assessments. And then also like our really, our CBAs are common benchmarks, like really local, like what are the words look like outside of state tests, which I think is an important question. So just kind of go quickly and very broadly, we can see how long this is, over some of the kind of the general statistics and then we can certainly talk about it if you want. But looking first at STAR reading, what we have at our, in our first grade, we have about, just quite about 37% of our kids are reading on grade level. Grade three, we have 53% of our kids reading on grade level. This is the winter administration. Grades five through eight, we have 44%. Now, this is an average, right? So just remember that, 44% of our kids on grade level. For math, we see a range that's higher, starting for all grades between 53 and 59% of our kids are on grade level for math. This is just on the, so, of course, grade two, fifth grade, and eighth grade. When we looked at our, at instructional levels, which is kind of where, the reading, where kids are being instructed, the level that kids are being instructed, the, the on grade level is much higher. And that makes sense actually because we're kind of engaging with the kid and it's, it's more than a snapshot and it's kind of how we're working with the child in the forward. So those instructional levels are much higher for reading. But I think the TNL team decided from this data that really we need to focus on reading and that's a real focus at the elementary grades and even the middle grades going forward. And, you know, I encourage you to look at this data, it's pretty, it's pretty interesting and we need to focus on reading and not to neglect math. We should not neglect math, but reading seems to be a place where we put some attention. So we spent most of the time in our meetings talking about that. We then had a follow-up on the coaching. On the coaching, I guess there was a presentation at the board meeting before I do this at board. But we talked a lot about where the early burden is. We're still, we're really working to match coaches' skills with teachers' needs. Some of the complications we have sometimes is finding teachers who want to do coaching and how we might work with that in the future. Then you'll remember that a year or, was it a year ago that we thought we had reading recovery? We shifted our early reading instruction, so two years ago, two years ago, because we're in the second year now. So we, we had talked about really shifting our instruction and early literacy and, and part of that was removing reading recovery. And then it sounded like working for something that was more fluid and that would enable us to serve more children. So we got an update on that. It seems that that is happening, there's going to shift in early literacy support. We're starting, as you mentioned, earlier, it's enabling us to start with kids in September instead of waiting for assessments and starting with kids in October and November. We're still using a variety of approaches. If the student needs reading recovery, a teacher can still work with that method with the student. We're training our teachers at Burton-Gillingham. And we've been able to serve more kids at this point in the year. We're up to 270 students at this point in the year. In other years, we've served between 161 and 188 students in an entire year. So we are able to serve more students now that of course the task now is to make sure we're serving more students as well. So, you know, that's something that we'll have to keep in mind. So, um, so that took us an hour and a half and that was it.
Can you get paper copies of these, of this report printed out or looking out at screen?
The, yeah, if anyone does want to, just ask, give Camila the email address, we'll print, we'll print them out for you, for Stella.
But I'm hoping that one of minutes go up with that because we're in the meeting. She loves to be.
So, I'm already here there. The, and just one of the goals for this year was to have this report reported to the, to the Teaching and Learning Committee, you know, on the second, third, and fourth quarter. So we'll be doing, this will be updated on the third and fourth and Dr. Chabot will, will report out again. And we also have, we have the annual summer report coming up the next month.
Eighteenth.
The 18th, yeah. So we have the annual summer report, which will gather some of this, some of this data for, for you to have and then some, some other extra data.
Thank you very much. Okay, so first it's to the DCA information and Mr. Michael, we can defer the report until next week. And Mr. Shaughnessy, will you report on the finance meeting?
We met, the audit committee, we went on this past Tuesday morning, April, March 20th. We reviewed the curiosities reports and the dispersment reports, Kings Audit Report. We also talked about, one topic I forget when we talked about, it's one of our time on the way. This year we'll remember. We did talk about the community eligibility program and whether that could be expanded to other schools. Right now, we have the four elementary schools, GW, JFK, Edson. And Mr. Corelli and Mr. Olson are looking at the possibility of expanding that. One of my concerns is that the federal government's going to reduce funding for that program. But I think that if we have schools that are in the program, I think that the funding will stay for it. And so Mr. Corelli and Mr. Olson are going to be looking at closely at how it could be expanded in the district for next year. And we'll hear about that later on. So I'm also on the, on the audit committee of OSIS. And the last time, the last audit committee meeting, we had a, a report by the Kings Auditor there. And there's a number of exceptions that he gets on a regular basis, it's like maybe three to five percent. And they do about less than 50% of the number of claims that we do here in Kingston. And I think the number of claim, of exceptions that we've had here since July 1st is maybe four. I mean, most months, we have zero. I mean, most months, we have zero exceptions on our claims auditor's report. So, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Nelson on her, on the job that she does with that. And I did congratulate her when I left the meeting on Tuesday. And also, you know, and the support that she gets from the rest of the people in the traders and business office, so she said that's a very well-worked team. So, that report.
Okay. And do you want to roll P O E sixty-eight, sixty-nine there?
Oh, was that in, was that in the?
Yes.
Is it in the set?
No, it's not.
Okay, so, we have D O E sixty-eight, which is the claims auditor's report. D O E sixty-nine is the charges report. I'm going to accept those reports. Thank you for that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. And the next meeting is April seventeenth?
It's Tuesday, April seventeenth.
Okay, this brings us to old business. Is there any old business that any trustee would like to raise at this time? Any old business?
Rob.
I'm sorry.
She doesn't have a dress up.
I'll work this way first.
Always.
She favors the right-hand side. I guess it's old business, I just wanted to thank Dr. Catalino and Mr. Reinhardt and all of the Kingsley School District for their response to the walkout on March fourteenth, and the handling of it, and further emphasis on school safety, so. That's it.
Thank you.
It's business.
Well, I would add that, because those were not, those aren't, again, I think, um, law. So, I would add, that's not why, that's not how we do this. We had talked a while back about, where there were some issues raised around school resource officers for us, and we had talked about kind of scoring that role a little bit more, and talking to the people, and I just wanted to get a kind of a sense of where we are with that, and what our...
Well, actually, four hours ago, all of our school resource officers, the mayor, myself, Chief Tinti, Ms. Olson, and Mr. Parker, were all sitting around this table, having our conversation about, oh, and our principals, I'm sorry, our three building principals, having a conversation about the school resource officers and their roles, reviewing their agreement from two thousand and eleven, and these roles, we're discussing some of the things that we kind of, this is kind of first jumping off point, you know, kind of come up with some different ideas of what we think, what we're doing with our SROs, and what we would like to be doing with our SROs. We also learned some things that, you know, we thought we weren't doing that we actually are. We need to, we need to be a little more, we need to communicate better, kind of some of the things that are happening, that I was not even, you know, thinking that they were doing, that they are. But also looking at more collaboration with, more opportunity for professional development, collaboration with the principals. The one thing we walked away from today was the need for planning time together with our building principals and our school resource officers. You know, they just come to work, and school starts, and it's not like that real opportunity to plan, so we're going to create that environment for them during the summer, and several times throughout the year. So, they can sit down and say, you know, I think when we talk about what the school resource officers do, we just can't talk about it. You know, it's like, oh, yeah, this is what they do, but we don't do what we do with a lot of other, I mean, they do it informally, but what we do, everything else we do in this district is, we create a plan, we set goals, we measure those goals, we check on those goals, we readjust it, we don't, we're not, you know, going in the direction we want to go. And I think that's, that's an important process that's missing with our school resource officers. I think they really, and I think Chief and the mayor really like that idea. So, we can come to you and say, these are the things that we want to see happen with our SROs this year, and these are the things that happen. And I think that's, that would be a good, a good way to kind of communicate your value on what they do.
Will they be part of the safety discussion in the U T, the public discussion? Or... Be a good idea?
And I think it's, I think, you know, we've decided for this proportionality, we've done a lot of work in that area for our district, for our building leaders, and I know that Mr. Parker is at those meetings. But I think that the SROs have a particular, they probably have a particular slice of that, they are responsible for, you know, they work with our kids in a specific kind of domain, and I think it's important for them to also be hearing these conversations that we're having around this personality, and differential disappointment, and things like that. And so, I think that there would be some professional development around some of the racial dynamics that are involved in that, I would think that's pretty important for our population.
And I think one of the most important things that was in the agreement, and I agree with you, but just a little piece that is in the agreement originally two thousand and eleven, and it said in giant capital letters, that our school resource officers are not to be involved in disciplinary process, in the disciplinary process, that's not their role. So, you know, while that's, I agree with you, that there's, there's a sensitivity that needs to be there, maybe our faculty could be, could be used in that way, that, you know, they're not there to discipline our students. They're there to be resources, they're there to create relationships. So, there's, that's kind of the conversation we had today, and what we really want to develop moving forward. And then we want them there for safety, for sure, absolutely we do, and for helping us with our, with our traffic patterns, and helping with our safety plans, and maybe, and for looking at, you know, okay, if we are going to put bulletproof glass in doors, what doors are they? And we're not going to talk about it, because we don't want anyone to know which doors are the ones that have bulletproof glass, and those kind of things. So, I mean, that's a, that's, that's the kind of thing we want them used for. And Ms. Fitzgerald, when she did summer nine, and I don't respond on those, it's when they do summer nine, our school resources can then, they ask it to our classes with our students, and so those are the kind of things we want to see more of.
That would be right, that kind of engagement, and also, and an awareness about, about those racial dynamics that are, you know, part of our culture. And that would be some attention.
Mrs. Jordan?
I also wanted to go back to the walkout day. In terms of the day itself, I appreciate the fact that the students and the administration tried to create a response to what was a national movement. And I, and I really think that people have to understand, it's a real struggle for us and for the building administrators, and for a lot of the students, to find that balance, where kids can express themselves and want to be constructive, and our need to make sure that they are safe at all times. And I think that there is a lot of misunderstanding about that, fact that we don't want to announce what we're going to do, when we're going to do, where we're going to do it. And so, I think that in response to the lovely young woman who spoke about Bailey, I think it's important to remember that there was a wonderful demonstration at Bailey in support of Parkland, right after it happened. And the reason it was able to occur was because it was spontaneous, it wasn't announced in the press, nobody knew it was going to happen. And I think that was a lovely gesture on the part of the students and administration. So, I think that it's really difficult sometimes, and I just want to express to all of the players that I can appreciate that, but I can also appreciate the need that the students have to want to align with something that they feel so strongly have. And so, going back to the walkout day, I understand that there was an opportunity for the press to attend that day, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, is it, it's my understanding that all the credential press that was present back at sign up was committed into the...
Credential press that had signed up ahead of time, let us know they were coming, I didn't, we were able to identify by themselves, were, were gained, gained entrance to the building, along with Mrs. Higgins using this high decker to go through, and they kind of worked with help.
Great, I'm glad to hear that, because I know that, that's part of the kids deciding to get their, their efforts out into the public domain, so I appreciate that. And, and that's all I had to say.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other old business?
Oh, are we all on old business, or whatever announcements?
We're, we were on old business, we need to get to new business. There's still some old...
It's kind of a mix of old business and announcements.
Old business and business. Now, we're onto new business. Is there any new business that any trustee would like to raise at this point in time? Yes, Miss Guido?
Did you want to discuss our meeting tomorrow? Two thirty? I just, because we hadn't spoken about it this report, and I heard, okay, you're looking at me like...
What were you reporting out afterwards?
Sorry.
Yeah.
We, I just thought that we would have some kind of group discussion before, it didn't seem like a public discussion, not a private discussion.
About what we're going to, we're going to raise, yeah.
And I think there was some question of how it's going to happen tomorrow on the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, we, we have reached out to, you know, Congressman Faso a few times, he agreed to meet us tomorrow afternoon, a couple of board members.
Well, he reached out to us first.
Yeah, he reached out to us, and we agreed to, to meet him. I know there's a few board members who were going to sit in on this meeting, and, you know, ask some questions that we're concerned about, about education in the federal law.
Like the community eligibility for lunch.
Community eligibility.
Right. So, we can all come prepared with questions and...
And if you need, if you want...
Budget.
Yeah.
Budget, Medicaid, you know.
I've got a lot of them, but...
Yes.
Is any, he's saying for, has he told us how long he's staying, raising up his press?
No, I don't know.
And the press has been invited?
Uh, we, no, we had not invited the press. I don't know if he has or not.
I just heard a rumor that they were, so. I was sure, I wonder if it was a, it was a public meeting or...
He did call and ask if the press could be invited. He also got a call at five o'clock tonight, inquiring about if I knew what kind of questions that he was going to be asking.
Oh, from his office?
From his office, yeah.
So, I guess I made some assumptions that his office would be contacting the press.
I, well, we told him to get back to them.
We just contacted the press.
Which has more questions.
Well, and Kate, we certainly, you know, we take photographs.
She, sure.
Or Megan, or the other...
We haven't been, he didn't give us any limitations on what we can ask, or...
My, my, my.
When I, when I responded, I did not know. He said he would be fully prepared.
Likely to education.
I, I think he's anticipating education questions, because we have given him education questions before.
Right, yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, I think our purpose is to advocate for education, not to necessarily have a round. Sorry, we could be here all day. It's a hot call.
Well...
Here on the fly, I'm... I'll be, I'll be described. In terms of new business, the one thing I thought maybe you'd want to talk about is that we attended a freedom, a free speech seminar up in Albany.
Okay. Well, I'd like to comment.
Jump in. Catherine Collins and Mrs. Jordan and I attended a seminar up in Lakeland last Thursday, Student Rights to Free Speech and Privacy, which actually, we discussed at length, it's very informative, the students' rights to free speech in an educational setting. And we will get more into that, as, you know, we discuss, that's what the plan is for education client, and talk about safety, but there seems to be widely held misconception that students do have the right to make their passionate devotion to any cause, make an announcement about it, or organize a march, or sit in about it at any point in time, which is not the case. And there's a lot of case law that, that actually, the founding figure of the district's when students have created a substantial disruption to the educational process. So, it's not, you know...
It's not as kind of...
It's not unfettered rights, like we couldn't go into a theater and scream fire, you know, and not expect any repercussions. And the other thing I'd like to talk about when we get to board announcements, so, you know, people with other new business, I will wait until that. Any other new business? Okay, board announcements? Yes?
I had the pleasure of working with the students who worked on Vida backstage with June Wolfers Dick, who did the costumes. It was just a lovely, lovely group of students. It was a lot of fun, they were terrific. And the difference between, they lost about two, two weeks of rehearsal time because of the snow. And to their credit, they persevered and had wonderful audiences that were very appreciative of their hard work, and it was really lovely, lovely performance.
I, I know that some of us also, when I went, Mr. Shaughnessy, went, it was marvelous.
Yeah, I just, that was something lying on me.
Oh, wow.
It's such an incredible production, and students are all, are part of each piece of it. They're the orchestra, they do the staff, they do the costumes, and it's such an impressive performance, and it's one of those things that just makes you so happy, making students to be fortunate for president and parent. They were, it was very spectacular.
Okay, any other board member announcements?
Well, I was going to say something about the Vida too, so. And I don't know if you were going to talk about the screening of...
I was.
I'll let you do that.
Okay.
I think you're on N P R tonight, that a new town, I forget the, I forget the, the last, the New Town Parents Association has released an app.
They, they have, and it's powerful.
Anonymous recording of school threats, and it seems that it's nationwide. I mean, I don't know why else they would have it on N P R.
Well, it's on TV too today.
Oh, I didn't see that.
At least today, yeah.
So, that's, I think everyone should be aware of that, you should be...
Yeah, look for it. It's probably going to be run frequently, so.
Well, you're talking about an app, and you're talking about...
No, it's, it's advertising app.
An app, yeah.
And they did, they did like a statement, it's a video, this particular one, I'm checking that TV.
Well, I don't know, I made that a public service announcement, but it's a, it's a phone, it's a phone app to report threats anonymously, and it's going to go to a central location that'll have the capacity to reach back to local law enforcement. Again, I don't know if it's going to be nationwide, but it was announced, it was on a national news platform today.
It was today. I have one quick announcement and statement. We were invited to come to a screening of Newtown, which documentary about the shootings at Sandy Hook and the afterman. And there were several families involved who lost children at Sandy Hook. And on, on the panel was a teacher who was a survivor of that particular bed. But this was produced by Sacade Works, the local production company, and the director of producer was also on the panel, along with Chief Tinti, me, and a woman, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, a woman from, who is a mental health professional. And it was moderated by Cornell Corporate Extension. But the documentary itself was very powerful, and they did ask us a question about what we would advocate for in terms of gun control legislation. Now, I happen to think, and I will share this with you, if you'll be touring, that we get lost in the weeds with what particular gun legislation we would like to see pass. And the most powerful thing would be to take these very motivated young people who have lived with the threat of school shooters since they were born, you know, combine was in nineteen ninety-nine, and I quoted Dolores Huerta, who actually runs the program for Huerta at U pack, I guess, but she organized United Farm Workers. And what she said was, people have to vote. You can protest until you're blue in the face, the sky turns yellow, and if you do not vote, nothing will change. People have to vote. So, what I encourage parents to do, and the students to do, is register, and inform yourselves, and find out who your legislators are, let your feelings be known, and vote in every single election, local, state, and federal election. And I think that'll make a change, maybe far more rapidly than concentrating on one single piece of gun legislation, gun control legislation. You know, we shouldn't have students attending school on a daily basis worried about gun violence in their classroom. So, get out and vote. Do you have children at home who are not registered yet? Register that.
Well, I hope that message about getting out and voting is part of what we teach our kids, separate of anything global agenda, but it's part of what we teach our kids in the civics, the age of the high school. I mean, I would love to see us... I mean, I would love to see us have a voter registration day at the high school or pass out voter registration cards so that students, as soon as they're eligible, they...
Some, some civics teachers do participation in government. We always have them here, you know, in the hallway, they're available, but I would be happy to go get some before the election, make sure everybody had one. Any other board member announcements?
I just wanted something about, go back to resource offices. I think you said a couple of days ago, I heard you say that threats that are reported at Kingston High School mostly go to the school resource officers.
Yeah, and surprisingly, surprisingly, things that, we're surprised at how much that goes on at Kingston High School is reported from, to our, to our school resource officers directly by students. And really, that's what we want to see. And remember a few weeks ago, we put it on the, on the internet, asking people, please don't, don't, don't forward a rumor or a, an old picture or a, or a Photoshop picture, tell someone. And we have had students, if they hear something, they see something, they're saying something, they're saying to our school resource officers, who can quickly determine whether or not this is, you know, but at least they're having those conversations. And I was really impressed with how, you know, we hear, we've been hearing a lot of different things, but I was, we've all been impressed and actually, meeting with the mayor today, he said, he was impressed with the mayor did a walkthrough with our school resource officers. How many of our students come to our school resource officers and say, hey, this is going on here, hey, this is going on there, or hey, this is what I saw. So we're, it's, again, just one of those things was improving our, proving our value in that relationship with city, city police department and, and town hall, for example.
Any other announcements? All right. We've reached the second opportunity for full participation. If there are anyone who would like to address the board, please come forward. Let's keep our things in line. See you all in two minutes.
I'm just going to use my teacher voice. Obviously, I'm Carol Dexter. I think most of you know me, I'm a proud teacher from JFK. And I just wanted to say something about the, the pre-K hub and I was glad you talked about it and I'm glad you're reaching out early and thinking about when we've got prototype rule and had our plans come in. I would just like to say that if there's one thing that several of us have learned in the however many years we've taught, particularly those of us who are now teaching the children of our, of children we taught when we first off started, is that if we're going to get, reach the children we want to reach, our poverty, inner city kids that we want to reach, we need to use relationships. We can't use flyers, we can't use the school website, we need to use relationships. So I would like to offer and encourage that you use some of us who have taught those students, the parents who now are looking to start recruiting those kids. We know who they are, we know how to talk to their parents, we know how to make them feel comfortable. Those are the people you want around, along with new staff and whatever, when you're doing those open houses. So please, you know, we're on a payroll, let us, let us do what we can do to help make that as successful as possible. When I moved to Kingston, my masters is in early childhood, I came having done nursery school and pre-K in this inner city Troy for the kids from the housing projects. So my heart lies there and I really think we can make a success of it. But I also think if we, you know, if we don't use some unusual, different ways of getting to our parents and making them feel comfortable, that we're going to find the same kinds of things get in our way. Attendance be a problem and those things. So I just wanted to throw that out there and I wanted to thank you about what you said about voting because I think that's a really important thing. And I think that's pretty... Oh, and my last thing was I usually come up and invite you all to visit at the beginning of the year, but please come visit, I know it's March, but you're always welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, here are your fingers. I wanted to be motion to adjourn. Call this a finger.